He does get out of a uniform. And take that over there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seven o'clock, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to orders. Darcy, you call the rule, please.
Moore?
Yep, here.
Mar?
Yeah.
Moody?
Here.
Ingstrom?
Here.
Engelhardt?
Here.
Thank you. Item three is the pledge allegiance. Everybody that's able, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item four then, perfection and approval of the agenda. Second. All those in favor say aye. So no, all right. Right along here. Item five is public comment. Out there getting comments? Okay, not, we will keep moving on then. So item six is public hearing on the authorization of loan agreement and the issuance of notes to evidence of obligation of the city thereunder. That was something. So, Darcy, tell us what that is.
Sure, so this is your public hearing on authorizing an amount not to exceed a million dollars for a general obligation capital loan for the post-fill utility Ziegler project and the sidewalk trail to Roque. So if you want to ask the public if anyone has any comments.
Any comments then on that out there, folks? Everybody kind of understand what's going on here in the city?
The trail to Roca?
Yes.
Are you gonna maintain that in the winter then?
Absolutely.
So what is Roca? Is that like a street?
That would be the subdivision out by Norplex.
Four bit apartments, houses.
So right now, all of those folks that they're walking, they're using the road.
Yep. So where does it connect from?
It'll connect from the wastewater treatment plant. It'll run the ditch, so we'll be filling in the ditch out to Pacific is the ending. Right, but it will be along the roadway. It won't be following the creek.
Right. So all of this will be within the city right away? Gee, any other questions? And of course, the other one, the big one is the water hookup to Ziegler, you know, and
And updating services to the residents north.
Yes, so, right, I mean, that's not only, it's not only the service that's going out to Ziegler, but also new water line and shut offs.
And well transmission line.
Yeah.
To well five, yeah.
So it's there's a lot of things going on, but it's one of those times when it's the opportunity to fix some things and it'll get done, so. All right, so I guess if we can go ahead and close the public hearing, then if everybody's done. Okay, well, I'll go ahead and we'll close the public hearing. And then just go on to item seven.
Resolution, yeah.
Okay, item seven is resolution number 1461-25, resolution instituting proceeding to take additional action. What does that mean?
So that means if you approve it, we're gonna move forward with the with the bonding.
So would the
Yes, it is.
I'd make a motion to approve resolution 1461-25.
Right, motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Larry, okay, Darcy, whenever you're ready.
Moore?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Ingstrom?
Yes.
Engelhardt?
Yes.
All right. That's done, thank you.
How do you go? I think this just gets published. How do people know that there's a bond for sale? Where do you publish all this?
Yeah, so it'll be all electronically done by Spear Financial on their, with their banks and their financial, yeah.
Banks, local banks.
Correct, yeah.
It's not your job.
No, it is not. Spear Financial will be doing that. So then your next resolution is doing it by electronic bidding and you've looked at the rough draft of the financial statement that I sent out to you that's sent out to all bidding parties.
So that is item eight then. Resolution number 1462-25, resolution approving electronic bidding procedures and official statement. So I guess Darcy's kind of explained that to you folks, so we need a motion on that one also.
I move, I move to approve that resolution.
All right, Larry, second?
Okay, go ahead.
Deborah? All right. So Darcy, whenever you're ready.
Moore?
Yes.
Mar? Moody?
Yes.
Ingstrom?
Yes.
Engelhardt?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item nine, we got Tara with our insurance. Well, that's gonna lower that.
This is the invoice renewal packet. It starts off with your invoice and it gives the line of coverage, the limit of coverage and what the contribution amount is for each line. Just to give you an idea of last year 2024, your total contribution was 102,015. So this there is an increase of about four and a half percent. I'm sorry, four and a half, okay. It's an increase of about four and a half percent from last year. And the total building and property limit went up about three percent from last year, and that's just inflation. Your auto physical damage went up. The total amount of vehicles went up by about 20% because you made some changes and a couple different vehicles, newer vehicles. The vehicle packet also gives alternate, if you want to increase your excess liability. So right now, you've had a liability limit of 2 million with an excess liability of another 2 million, so you have $4 million liability coverage. If you want to increase that at all, there's calls for going all the way up to 13 million. And that's on with your page in.
Hey Tara, before you go on, would you mind telling everybody who you are because we're broadcasting?
Sorry, Tara Holbert, and I'm from Community and Transline Auctions. So the pages for the property has your seat. And then going on, you have your statement of values and those pages are all of the buildings that you have with limits of coverage along with contents and miscellaneous property on. You have your tractors and larger pieces of equipment, those things are scheduled, so those are on this statement of values. And then your vehicles are on the statement of values as well. And then another nice thing that's in this packet is they have, or they have breakout pages. And those are towards the back, so that would be like the last last four pages.
The general liability.
It says general liability breakout. So this shows where all of your money is going. And it breaks it down by liability and general liability, auto liability and property. So for instance, you know, the swimming pool is costing you, your public officials, excess law enforcement, and then it breaks down each vehicle, what it is for liability. And then the next page breaks down by physical damage, which is the comprehensive inclusion coverage on your vehicles. So you know exactly how much each vehicle is costing you for comprehensive inclusion. And then the property breakout pages, that shows you exactly what each building is costing you. For instance, Turner Hall, the insurance mod is 2.3 million and it's costing you just under $6,000 per year. One nice thing about these breakouts is you can look at these and if there's buildings that you're questioning, do we keep coverage on them? Do we take them off? What would we do if they went down? If they're costing us too much money, you know, if we want to look at replacement costs or what it's, you know, what the insurance amount is on any of these buildings, we can take a look at that and give you an idea of any changes you'd like to make.
Are we pretty much insuring ourselves a replacement cost or?
Yep, everything that's on here is replacement cost and on the schedules. When it has, the vehicles are actual cash value. Buildings are replacement cost along with contents. So every, all of, all those items are on a blanket. So your blanket limit for buildings is 30,469,977.
You know, when you have, right in the second page, it says member invoices, it says equipment breakdown included. So there's, and then crime is 350,000. What, that's crime of what? Cyber crime or, you know, weed commit crime?
Cyber is a different line, that's a separate line of coverage.
No, what is this crime line include?
If you have, you know, somebody stealing funds from
The city?
Yeah, the city, somebody steals funds from.
I mean.
If somebody comes in, you know, you have, or somebody steals.
It's theft, yeah.
Somebody robs the city clerk?
No.
At gunpoint, no?
No, it's more so like one of you guys.
Like employees.
So it's 350,000, doesn't seem like very much.
Those are, that's an option that you can always take a look at more.
And then the contribution is zero?
It's included with the with the property like rate, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So the cyber, you're asking about that, that's a separate line of coverage now. And they did an optional call, so they've got 250,000 as their minimum they'll do. And Darcy had to fill out a nice long application for that. But they do an optional limit of a million dollars. And that's on the very last page, they did some optional quotes for you. So if you would raise that limit to a million, it would cost you worth 1,323 dollars. And they did do some optional deductibles voting out for you. It doesn't save a whole lot of money. With actual deductibles, your property rate is pretty low for a thousand right now, but if you're without there, and you've also got 250 comprehensive 300 collision deductibles. Except for there's one, I was gonna ask about one vehicle. I think it used to maybe be on fire equipment, or maybe it was, or something, there's a 1995 Ford, and that was the one that had a couple of planes.
Yeah, that's a dump truck.
Yeah, that one, and so they put the collisions about 12,500 for that.
That's okay.
And all the rest of them had 200 comprehensive 350 collision. And this doesn't have to be signed on anything tonight, it brings you July 1st. So we just thought we'd do this, I need to take a look at everything. And go through the buildings, you know, if you have questions on what buildings are insured for, what your vehicles, your contents, locations of things. You can reach out to me, give me a call, email. Just to let you know, to ICAP, in 2019, 2020, they had valuations northwest, come and do property valuations for all of their members. They're having another company do that. And it's gonna be on rotation, so they're starting in southeast Iowa, kind of working their way through. I think they'll be in northeast Iowa in two years, or in a year or two of it, so we're gonna be going through the high valley buildings again, and this is a member benefit with no cost to the city, so.
We're insuring the buildings up at the fairgrounds.
Correct.
Greenland, town line.
Yep.
Yeah, this, this gives auto breakout, it gives a break of all of them.
So when ICAP does that, when they come in and they'll go through buildings, you said?
Yeah, probably not all of them. They'll go through, I know wastewater treatment plants are a big one. They want to make sure that those are insured correctly. You know, if you've got one, you don't necessarily got like courthouse buildings or older buildings that are hard to put a replacement value on. They'll go through those. Just make sure they're insured value. But, but smaller buildings, shelters, playground equipment, that kind of stuff, they probably won't.
Gotcha, yep.
Take a look at.
You brought up Turner Hall, I was kind of surprised at the value of Turner Hall, $2 million?
They got an area of over 10,000, it's like 10,560 feet built in 1912. So they go right, you know, they start with the area, the type of construction. And if you have, again, if you have questions on a building, so another option that you can do, if you've got an older building that has a bit of coverage and you think something happened to it, we wouldn't put it back to the way it was. We put something up and not that. You can pull that out of the blanket, you can change it to extra cash value, or you could put what's called functional replacement cost on it. So we do a cost estimator on it and figure out what it, you know, maybe 50% of replacement cost or something. Because you've put something up. You wouldn't replace it to the way it was, and that could save you some premium dollars.
I mean, the basin's really nice, but other than that, they don't use.
Well, I think there's, there's lots of things on here, I think, that are overvalued.
That's replacement value.
Right.
If it's like Turner Hall, it probably might affect the fire station, the side of it. If you're gonna put something back up, that's gonna cost you 2 million at least.
I forgot about the fire station. Is that?
We're not insuring the fire station, no, we don't own it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have a police garage?
Yes. Right next to Turner Hall.
What is it that you said that?
She asked if you have a police garage.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, like, for instance, here you've got your nest.
An add to the value of Turner Hall. By 314,000.
The building has things that stay within that building.
Yeah.
You have miscellaneous property that might fall around to place to place.
But if it's for that field.
Yeah. Yeah, so the other miscellaneous stuff that you might, you know, tools might go from one shop to the next. There's a miscellaneous unscheduled limit. Miscellaneous of the unscheduled, we've got a limit of 318,589. That's on each on the additional property statement of values. Because of that.
Probably the page. Two of two.
On page 10 of the packet, yeah. And that's all the extra stuff that might get rolled around, or that's anything that has a limit of under 10,000, you can lump it together and just lump it in a row. You've got miscellaneous tools or contact tables or trash receptacles, things like that. You can just lump that all together in one limit. And that all covers that. Things that are, and things that have a value of over 10,000 will be scheduled.
I assume the five listed shelters has shelter only on page five and six of those breakouts. You guys have some kind of idea of which which structure is which shelter?
So that's probably on your statement of values for where they're at. So you've got lowest part, you've got a couple shelters there, one, two, three, four.
It's like there's three probably that are the same size and then.
The weight, you know, square footage and.
It's just on that breakout there, just listed as shelter.
Yeah, and then on the statement, it has the square footage and.
That's unlisted for 300 some thousand, right? That includes like a half gallon of Mayweather Beach corn liquor.
It's, if it's valued under 10,000. And does it move from place to place or something?
I don't know.
Well, that value just goes up.
I thought 20 or 30 years ago.
Yeah.
Good for you.
I was cleaning up Turner Hall.
So Tara, we actually got like a month, I mean, these folks can look at it, right?
Take a look at it, you can take a look at it, go through the buildings, the limits. If you have questions, you know, everything, the signatures of payments is due back by July 1. If you're not able to make payment by that day, they have basically a 30-day grace period. You've got three months of June or July.
Yeah.
You just have to fill out the commitments.
Yeah, gotcha.
I have a question. Years ago, when we had EMC Insurance here, we had something called a linebacker. And that was just to ensure city employees and the mayor, do we still have something?
Yep, it's called, EMC calls it linebacker, WIC calls it public official liability.
So how much is that for?
So that is your $2 million limit, plus you got the 2 million gap.
So if they were to get sued.
Or some wrongdoing.
Yeah.
All right, any more questions for Tara? Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks, Tara.
Okay, we can go on into item 10. Professional services agreement with WHKS Construction Administration and Observation Services for the Ziegler project. Darcy?
So you had this professional service agreement in your packet from WHKS. This would be the construction engineering that's needed for the Ziegler post-fill utility improvement project. And he's asking for a lump sum of $39,800. Well.
Is it a percent of the?
It is a percentage of the project, yes, correct, yeah. If you remember right, Lindsay did the design with partnership with WHKS because Lindsay is going to be retiring at the end of the year, so he spaced out all of his onsite construction engineers. So he partnered with WHKS, who has been involved in the project from the beginning.
Like engineers.
Yeah, correct. Right.
So like, Lindsay doesn't get a chunk too, does it?
No, he does not.
Okay.
This would just be the construction, no, Lindsay, we're done with the design now and he's been paid, so.
All right, so we would need a motion?
I move to accept the agreement with WHKS for 39,800, 39,800.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Who say no? Let's be carried. Okay, item 11 then is resolution number 1461-25, resolution approving contract and bond.
That was already done 1461. At the number seven.
Oh, I have a typo on the agenda, let me look at it. Yeah, it's 1461. That's okay. I'll just put a little one.
Which one changes?
The one, item seven?
Number seven.
1467.
Let me look. Too many papers. Let me look at my. Two, 1460 is the resolution proceeding.
1460, okay, thank you.
Do you need, go back then, have me redo my on that number seven, redo my
Motion?
To press that?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so reverting back to resolution 1460-25. Instead of 6%. 1461.
Second by Moore?
Second to that, Larry.
You're all right with that, okay?
So all those in favor, say aye.
All right.
All right, so we got that cleared up?
Yeah.
All right. So then item 11 then is a resolution approving contract and bond with Eastern Iowa Excavative and Concrete. Is there a motion?
I move that we accept resolution 1461-25.
All right, Becky, there's a second?
I'm second.
Larry? Okay. Darcy, whenever you're ready?
Moore?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Ingstrom?
Yes.
Engelhardt?
Yes.
All right, that passes, thank you. Item 12 then is rock from the wastewater treatment plant that was on the roof, you know, that was taken off when they did, redid the roof. So kind of, you folks, what you want done with that, if you want to sell it? And how do you, how do you want to sell?
Anyway, can we use like somewhat of a base for the rope, rope of the trail, rope of sidewalk?
Yeah, I wonder, you know, I don't know what kind of rock that is up on that roof.
It's like the decorative.
Yeah, it is a decorative rock, so I don't know if that makes, I don't know if that makes such good stuff or not, you know.
Rock is easy when you put rock down to.
Oh, yeah.
You've got drainage underneath and rocks patch and.
It actually makes good drainage if it's clean. That's what they want.
You're not gonna get me for it, I don't think, trying to sell it. You've got the value of there.
So you wanna, you wanna make a motion that we go ahead and use it on the project for the?
Look into that, I move that we use, look into using this rope, this rock from the roof as substrate for the sidewalk.
Very good, all right, is there a second?
I'll second what you ever, he just said. Substrate.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Say no, Carrie. All right, we know what we're gonna do with the rock. Okay, item 13 is police challenger, charger, the charger.
So what we want to do with the charger is sell it outright. And then what we get for sale of that, that'll go towards the update of the new vehicle.
Oh, yeah.
New vehicle, yeah.
Yeah, it just goes back into the police budget. I said it just goes back in towards the police.
Yeah, goes back in for the budget of, yeah. It's that, yeah, this is like the.
Do we need a motion for that?
I need a motion directing us to sale and by sealed bid, and how do you want it done so that notice can be given?
So I have to be used.
It's got a minimum, I think, on it.
But I need some direction.
Anything else you got on it?
Uh, let me look here. 99,577. And book value on it is still pretty high with the motor they got in it and everything. At a low, you, did, did you keep that?
I thought it was 20.
The low retail on it was still sitting around 1450. That's, that's like you know, you got, they go by fair, good and excellent, well, that's just the fair is what going off, so.
So 15, 1450 is then fair?
That's fair, yep.
Oh, that's pretty good. What condition is it?
Yeah, we just spent another, what, a couple thousand?
Yeah, I mean.
In the bills.
What we put into it now is pretty much in good shape now, or if not good, excellent shape, but um, yeah, that's what that's where it sits right now. Of course, that's with everything out of it though too, I mean. I mean, the cage itself was an old K9 cage that we got from Winship County, and it's down, well, that's even a half a cage now for transport. It'd be all stripped out, so just being.
That happens, there's holes in the holster, holes, there's some Mars or hole someplace.
Uh, no.
You appreciate it.
Note, as of right now, the backseat is still in pretty good shape and
Okay.
because we put the seat in and there's no tears or rips in the backseat and even with the front seat. Taking the equipment out is pretty simple, other than the only thing that'll probably stay on will be the spotlight on the driver's side, move that in. I'm taking the equipment out, it's pretty simple, other than the only thing that'll probably stay on will be the spotlight on the driver's side, move that in, attach.
So maybe we should maybe not like have a sealed bid, like a fourteen thousand minimum or a fifteen thousand minimum. And then get the money toward. Fourteen hundred.
Thousand, yeah.
Thirteen thousand for that?
Still, it's up there.
If you don't sell it, you can always reoffer it, lower your bid.
I was surprised too, Bob, but when I did the bid, or did the blue book on it, and that was the police package, that wasn't just a plain G in charge of, this was the police package, and, yeah.
So when we do, when we, if we do something like this, then you have to advertise that in the paper, right?
Yep. I was just self carbon and get done with it.
So I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Here we go, we're gonna have a motion that we're gonna sell the police, the charger, Dodge Charger, this vehicle. And we're gonna have it as a sealed bid with a fourteen or fifteen thousand, what should we say?
You may go fourteen.
Fourteen thousand minimum, it'll be advertised in the paper and the money that we get toward that will go to the, towards the new, into the budget for the new vehicle.
Alright. Everybody hear that motion, or if they did, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Is there, any other further discussion? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Who said no? Item fourteen then is police vehicle equipment bids.
Uh, believing your packets, they should be two, two quotes for, uh, outfit for the twenty twenty five fourth floor we just got, that we just picked up, um, last month. I don't, he had the one in my hand, I don't know. You got that one. So there, yeah, there's two quotes, uh, one of them was at, um, thirty four, one oh seven, forty seven. And the other one was. Is it this one? Yeah.
Turn here, it's about direct, this is the computer.
That's computer, yeah. And the other one was forty, one ninety four, oh six. One quote was from the sector and the other one is, what's that?
Des Moines. Yeah, so, so you had two different quotes in your packet, one was for a car computer that the mayor signed off on because of tariffs that were being imposed. So that's before you tonight to sign off. The computer, the car computer, he had two quotes, one was from sector in the amount of five thousand two hundred dollars and seventy six cents. And the other quote he had was from Gov Direct for nine thousand thirty eight dollars and twenty nine cents. So sector stated that this bid was only good until May fifth, or tariffs were gonna be imposed. So the mayor signed off on this one, but you need to look at it tonight so that you know that the mayor approved that purchase, okay? So that's for the computer. Then you had another two quotes in there for the outfit. And that would be from sector in the amount of thirty four thousand, one hundred seven dollars and forty seven cents. And the second quote on that was from Des Moines Fleet in the amount of forty thousand, one hundred ninety four dollars and six cents. So two different quotes before you tonight, one for a computer, which the mayor approved, the other is for the outfit.
Okay, so, I would suggest, I would think that we go with a little bit and sector, we're working with them on the other, so. Does it have everything? Apples to apples?
Yeah.
I move that we approve of, we gotta approve of that, what Dennis signed off on too, throw all this in one motion.
Yes, that would be great.
I move that we approve the purchase of the computer, which the mayor signed off on through sector and approve the uh, upgrade of the, upset of the police vehicle of thirty four, one oh seven, it's forty seven through sector also.
Yeah, motion, is there a second? Laura, I have to just make a comment, I'm glad you did that, otherwise I probably would own the computer. Alright, so all, all in favor say aye. Thanks. That it for that one?
That is it.
Alright, we'll go on into fifteen, law enforcement contract, probation for Connor, is that up?
Yep.
Alright.
Um, so you have your, the contract from Jacob was, he finished the academy and signed up on his law enforcement reimbursement agreement. Um, so you need to sign off on that tonight and then his six months probation is up. And I guess I need a date on when that, if it's retroactive, because I'm working on payroll right now, so I kind of stopped thinking, I'm not sure if I need to change the salary or not. So, um, you get two dollar increase, um, he finished the academy on the twenty fifth.
No, this is the graduation date, yep.
And so I don't know then if it's retroactive from that date or if it's from today's date for the probation period, so that's a question I have.
Remember?
It was always after the candidate that had went to the academy, um, once they graduate from academies, when.
It's usually six months and it's been six months.
It's been six months, so after the six month probation.
Six months being the twenty fifth?
Well, that was, that was his graduation date from the academy, so, um, I would say then his, he wouldn't have worked the weekend, so then his, um, official date of change in pay would have been, um, April twenty eighth, that Monday. Cause he didn't work the weekend.
But with that, we always went with after the grad, after they graduated from the academy is when.
Which was the twenty fifth of April. And what I'm saying is he didn't work the weekend, so does the wage then change on the twenty eighth?
So where pay increase would start at?
When was the, when was the start of the next pay period?
The twenty eighth.
So the twenty eighth, and then he worked again on the twenty eighth.
Yes.
Yep.
And my motion would be to start him the twenty eighth, assuming he hadn't put any hours in anyway.
No.
And it starts the next new payroll.
Right.
So that's my motion.
Alright, so Lori's made a motion, is there a second? Mary? Any further discussion? Not all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Who said no? Carrie?
And I need a motion to approve the agreement, so the mayor can sign the law enforcement agreement.
Okay.
And I'd also make a motion to approve the law enforcement agreement with Jacob.
Yeah.
Connor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mary? Any further discussion? Not all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Who said no? Pretty good?
Yeah, we're good.
Alright, we'll go on to item sixteen, resolution number one four six three two five. Resolution approving the Winshie County landfill comprehensive solid waste, the reduction plan. That was, that's with the landfill, eh?
Yeah, they made a amendment to their plan, I gave you a copy. They need, uh, you to sign off on it.
So is the long drawn out portion of the plan that you are copying, is that what was updated?
Right.
Or is that to, going to be updated?
No, that's what was updated.
Okay, cause that still had, uh, the recall list is there?
Oh, did it, yeah. So we need to make that change back to them.
So I was wondering if it was an old one.
I think they just.
On page, um, sixty two, sixty two and hard, they've got on page two of the.
Okay. Amendments are bold and underlined, so what is amended?
Under local government.
Are bold and underlined, so you, they're changing it to Klusner, right?
To Klusner, yeah.
Looks like that's about the only change they need, but.
It's kind of funny that, that's just being done now, huh?
Yeah.
They've been hauling in there for a while.
Yeah.
There's somebody who's mainly, like, Winshie County Conservation.
Is it, this isn't our regular, do we do this once a year with?
Every three years, from what I understood, yeah.
So that's, this is it then, kind of, sort of?
Yeah.
Alright. Everybody understand this?
Other than we're gonna tell them they got the wrong bear on it.
Alright, besides that, probably need a motion to accept this, this, uh, resolution with Winshie County landfill.
I move we approve the resolution one four six three dash two five.
Alright, thank you.
Second.
Alright, any further, okay, yeah, Percy, whenever you're ready.
Moore?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Ingstrom?
Yes.
Engelhardt?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Item seventeen then, professional engineering services for Erdman Engineering and that's for the sidewalk project.
We've discussed it before, haven't we?
Yeah.
Will they approve the agreement for, uh, you know, urban engineering on the sidewalk project?
Alright, thank you, is there a second?
Awesome, I think you could just take your.
Exactly. Um, is there, uh, before we vote, is, was there any discussion of when this project might be able to?
Yep, so I, when I spoke with Lindsay and we were working on, um, the agreement and the project overall, he said that it would be ready to go to bid by July with a September, October construction date, is what's tentative.
This year?
Yes.
Alright, I'm sorry I had to ask that question, but they, so we've got the motion and it's seconded, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Who said no? Okay, thanks. Item eighteen then is no parking Walnut and Lilac Lane.
Um, so we had some complaints about parking around that curb there where Lilac turns into Walnut. Um, we had some issues with cars parked across from each other, you've kind of seen the photos with some of them, that was sent to me. So I guess the question is if you want to make one side no parking or both sides no parking, and if you do, then we have to have the city attorney draft an ordinance to make it no parking, so.
I would think we should do one side parking, cause people live on those streets, right?
Right.
I would suggest that we do, do we have to move on this?
Well, you have to give me direction to have the city attorney draft an ordinance.
Well, I think that we should be able to park on one side. I wouldn't think that we want so much parking at all in that area, so even if you have parking on the other side, and those cars are coming, they can't see if there's kids.
Right, yeah.
Running and hiding behind.
There's a blind spot with that, um, curb there.
Corner there.
But it would be more, more on one side than the other?
I would say definitely on the, if you're coming from head north, you come around that corner and I would say definitely don't allow parking on that corner there.
So which side of the street is that?
That'd be on the south side of, uh, Lilac, I think.
Lilac runs from the north, south.
Yeah, so it's on the south side of Walnut, so as you're coming on north, I lot, Lilac, start rounding that corner. That's where the problem is, people are parking right on that corner and you gotta get around that vehicle and if there's no vehicle, park straight across.
You can't even see.
It's a tight fit. And you can't, you gotta, yeah.
You have eight driveways on the west and north side of Walnut and Lilac. Otherwise, some houses have Willow, looks like, and only, only three.
No parking here too.
On the south side.
You could go no parking from the start of the corner to the, uh, that first, the house on the corner there on the south side to his driveway. Go, no parking there.
Yeah.
If you see room.
You're saying on both sides.
Some from here.
The second house on each, on each side of the corner.
This one you really can't do because you got a driveway there, driveway there, but they, sometimes they do park on the other side there, so. But then you could go, well, that's up to you guys, I guess, I mean, I would say definitely on the south side for sure, no parking.
Are their driveways not sufficient to get enough of their own vehicles off the street?
There, how do I want to put this, there is, and there's enough room, but put their vehicles there, they just elect not to do it, yep.
Wouldn't like if you have a company and a few people or three cars, what would they go for?
Who, and who's doing the majority of the complaining?
Common sense like, they would park up there, but they.
Yeah, we've had, we've had residents, you get a lot of traffic coming out of that peasant run apartment.
And a lot of that traffic, when they are coming, they're not going very slow, they're coming around that corner pretty fast and if you have that vehicle on the south side, and they gotta go all the way around, if there's a vehicle on the, on the north side, one of these days they're gonna hit, and they're gonna collide. JT, you agree, you know where I'm talking?
For how far?
Are you thinking just corners?
Corner, I would go on the south side from about where, I'm not sure who, what residence this is on the west side. Just up from his driveway, around the corner to the other driveway.
Yeah.
So basically.
From where Lilac Lane turns into Walnut?
Yep, from here all the way to there, is what I would do. There's already a little bit, right, just on the corner, a little bit of section of yellow paint on the curb of no parking, but it's not that much, it's maybe like ten feet, they just need to extend it out more on both sides.
No parking on one side or no parking on both sides?
I would say the south side.
No parking on the south side?
Right, where, where the existing yellow paint is at now, just that it shouldn't be, be extended out.
Just trying to get detail for a city attorney to write an ordinance, yellow paint from Joe Blow's driveway to, that isn't gonna work for me. I gotta have like.
Well, do you know who lives there? I don't know who lives there.
Well, you could say like from the first house to where?
I just, where this dot's at to this dot. Right there. Does that make sense?
I think if you say from where Lilac Lane turns into Walnut Drive is no parking.
So the whole works?
Yeah, I mean on the south side or whatever, but that's how I would word it.
But you wouldn't go all the way on Walnut, you'd just stop right there, that first guy's driveway or that dot where.
Okay, so I'd have to look at some legal descriptions then, okay.
Kind of got a nursery.
Yep, that's what the council wants.
Yeah, so we're just looking for recommendations from the council or?
Yeah, well, I just need direction to give it to the city attorney to draft an ordinance for their review.
There's still not.
Those will be coming around to bypass those parked cars.
In, right, right, blind spot. Yeah. And we don't really have that big of a problem with the vehicles on the north side there, a lot of the times these guys, if, this residence, they're parked in the yard in their driveway. And same with this one, they were parked in their driveways, this road is pretty much clear, it's just this corner that's, and then when you, someone puts a vehicle just right past the yellow mark at two inches. Yeah. That's where. That's where I, that's the starting point would be everything.
We need to go out with a wheel and get some footage for Darcy.
That'd be a Dave job.
Well, but you're the guy with the law enforcement knowledge to know what's safe.
I'm not street supervisor.
I'm making a recommendation.
So alright, so.
Okay, so you want the city attorney to draft something for your review at the next meeting?
We just need your nod, yes or no, so, okay.
Alright.
Alright.
I heard it.
Alright, so Darcy will fire that off to the city attorney, and we'll get that written up, and then eventually folks can vote on that. Alright, let's go on to item nineteen then, the consent agenda, uh, would you, anything in there that you guys like to pull out or talk about? Yeah.
Okay, so a couple ideas, maybe, for the maybe, um, to help with a couple issues that we have. Um, I emailed all of you guys something about vacant building ordinances. Um, I really hope you consider adding that to my agenda and working on that, I shared a few different cities. Um, obviously with legal guidance, our, our ordinance does not have to be what the cities I sent you are, um, but they really are very helpful, they really encourage folks to get those buildings rented out or sell them. Um, so, um, um, my, so that's on my report, it's a little sparse because I was out of town for like half the month, so, um, I didn't, I didn't have as many things for it as usual. Um, a cool thing is that we now have folks from other coun, other, I almost said countries, which we have obviously, but that's how we're talking about. We have folks from other counties contacting me, um, looking to get interpreters and translators for services in other counties. Why is that cool? Because our residents also live in other counties besides Almankey, when Sheik County reached out to me. Um, and our residents go elsewhere to shop, to go, you know, do services, medical, et cetera. So, um, the word is getting spread, and it's very cool that our surrounding communities are looking to be more accessible to our population, so I think that's neat. Um, and this is inaccurate, it says interviewed a candidate for the open E S L position, I actually helped interview two people this last month. Um, we had last May, we hired someone in the, um, English as a second language class that's in person at the Northeast Iowa Wellness and Recreation Center, um, supported by the school, that person resigned, um, so unfortunately, and then we had to find someone else, and it's been hard to find people. Um, but we did hire someone for that position, so that's very exciting because a lot of folks in our community really need that service in person. There were some folks in that class, while they've been waiting for a teacher, they haven't had class, but some of them transitioned to online, and that works for some folks, but it's not the same as in person, so very excited to get that going again, that class only has space for about fifteen people, and the waitlist is almost a hundred people. So, um, there's, and that's just the people that know about it, imagine all the people in our community that could really use that, so. That's from my report, um. And then a couple things, I've had some people in the community and our surrounding community ask why we don't post our city council agendas online, so that people can find them. Um, so I know we've got our minutes that we post, right? But the agendas prior to the meeting, being either on the Facebook group or on the city website, I feel like would be really helpful. Um, all of the communities around us do it, I, and I, I double checked this. Elgin does it, Claremont does it, Wakon does it, Lansing does it, Wayna does it, Manona does it. So, it seems pretty, you know, I'm obviously Decor does it too, but I'm trying to do our county and our local um, and population comparable cities. Um, I've had a couple people who wanted to come to meetings and speak about things during public comment, and they don't know what public comment is, because they don't know what the agenda is. It would be copy paste, and you know, it would be really quick. Um, I would be happy to facilitate that if it needs to be facilitated, but I just think it would be a really great idea, it would show transparency. Um, potentially it could be translated, I would also be willing to help with that forever, you know, not just through June, um, so. And then another idea that I got from the, um, Iowa World Development Council Conference was if the city had a list of ongoing projects, um, one of the things I've noticed is that because people don't come to the city council meetings, or watch it on YouTube, I mean, they can get the information, but they're not. You get comments like, oh, I wish the city would do this, and you're like, they are, they're already doing it, or, oh, we really need a sidewalk going to, we're working on it, or just having a running list of sort of ongoing projects that we're working on as a community, and sharing it maybe every quarter or something would probably help, um, all of you guys and myself get less of those comments. Um, because it's like people don't think anything is happening if they don't have it shoved in their face, so, just an idea. Uh, that was, that came from a, a session I went to at the World Development Conference. Um, and then I wanted to share two potential action items for everybody in this room, if they care about following things. Um, probably you know that the AmeriCorps job, um, was cut at the food pantry, federal government basically gutted the AmeriCorps program. And that person found out while they were at work and had no notice, that they now don't have a job, and they were forbidden from doing any further tasks except filling out the final paperwork, because that's what you feel like doing, right, that fun paperwork. Um, so we lost a bilingual person who was the only staff at the food pantry, who was also helping harvest and plant at the gardens, who was helping modernize, get their technology up and running, who was helping to recruit more bilingual volunteers and volunteers in general. Um, they were working on expanding, um, you know, what, what they do, so. Um, especially as they're now going to a new location and expanding that, just very, very sad. Um, if you feel passionately about that project, I would encourage you to email Joni Ernst and Chuck Grassley because they have supported, so this isn't partisan, this is not Republicans versus Democrats. Um, AmeriCorps has been supported by Joni Ernst and Chuck Grassley a number of times over the years, they've spoken about the good it does in our community, we need to encourage our elected officials, whether we voted for them or not, to do our bidding, not the reverse. And so they've spoken publicly about how much they support it, we need them to advocate on a federal level for that program. It does a ton of good in rural communities, and it's really the rural communities that are gonna get hurt by this. Um, the other thing that is really, really scary is they're also looking at the federal level to completely cut all funding for Head Start. I'm not sure if you're aware, we have two Head Start classrooms in this community full of kids whose parents cannot afford to send them to daycare, who work at the plant, and you know, what are they gonna do? Then there's unsupervised kids. Um, Head Start is also supported by Joni Ernst and Chuck Grassley, I looked this up, they've supported it over the years. Again, so not trying to be partisan at all, but if they cut Head Start, you, this really can hurt our community, so please communicate with your elected officials about the things that are important to you. Um, because losing Head Start would devastate this town, for sure.
What about the interlibrary thing that I read in your minutes from your?
Yeah, so IMLS, um, was also cut, uh, it's, it's currently held up in courts, there's a lawsuit. Um, IMLS, Institute Museum Library Sciences, is what funds interlibrary loan for ours, for the state of Iowa. So basically, we get federal grants as a state that pay for the interlibrary loan program. Um, so they pay for a driver to come take books from us and take them everywhere, you know, take them back and forth. It pays for two different software, um, that, that we have to use to run the program. It pays for our websites right now, the library website. Um, so without that, I think it's eight to ten million dollars of grants that fund that for the state of Iowa. If that's cut at the federal level, I don't expect the state to step up and fund things ten million dollars, I don't think that's realistic. So it's, there's a huge potential for the interlibrary loan, um, to get cut at the state level. Again, who's that gonna hurt the most? Des Moines? No, it's gonna hurt us. Um, last year we had three hundred and sixty books that we borrowed through interlibrary loan, which doesn't seem like a ton, but that's a book a day. That's a book a day that I now have to say to people, no, you can't. And we can't possibly house all those books, right? I mean, we know this. Um, some of these folks who borrow books are borrowing books because they're homeschool parents, they're homeschooled, and they will check out twenty, thirty books at a time about a specific holiday or about a specific subject through teaching their children. Um, some of these books are, um, yeah, I mean, it's just things that we can't, we can't buy everything, so. We've got a lot of the boys from the Massey to come and do interlibrary loan about psychology. No one else in this town wants to check out books about psychology. Every single summer I have new boys from the Massey to come in and go, do you have any books about psychology? And so we can interlibrary loan them and not pay money, so, um, anyway, yeah, that's scary. So, I think that's all I have, does anybody have any um, questions or anything?
It's not our.
It's an executive order, they've all been executive orders, which is why some are held up in court. But I think the frustration for me is that we've got folks in the same party on our local level who've expressed support for these things that are getting cut on the federal level, and they're not speaking up. So we supported it until now, we just don't magically because we have for years, so. Um, that's what I think is needed, is to get our reps to actually communicate what they've communicated to us, unless they're lying to us, but. And I forgot also to mention that the food pantry, if you've got a garden, consider expanding, or place bring produce in. Uh, USDA grants were also cut significantly recently. So the last few years we've received four boxes of produce for free from Humble Hands Farms in Decorah, and now that's not happening, because that was a USDA grant for small farms to bring local food into communities, that's been cut. And then also the USDA actually used to give protein specifically meats and milks and things to the larger food pantries, so like Northeast Iowa Food Bank that we get a lot of food from has lost a bunch of food and things are now more expensive for them, so, yeah. Which is why it was so important to have an AmeriCorps volunteer at the garden, so that we could make up that difference at our own garden, so, that's it, thanks.
Thanks, Chris. Okay, any other comments then on the consent agenda? That is our motion to accept that. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to thank the city for helping me down at the walking trail, uh, a week ago I went down to check on my little flower garden I have on there, and I have a flowering crab tree planted in memory of my sister, donated by my sister-in-law. Anyhow, blowing beautiful, it's been down the next week and the thing was, I don't know exactly what happened, I don't know if somebody was very, very strong and pushed it over, you know, or if the wind, I mean, it just seems, anyhow. I don't remember a wind between eight one and the next week that it might have blown it, but it was a beautiful flowering crab, and I thank the city for, um, picking it up, I went down and cut it up, Darryl helped me a little bit, but I did the majority of it, couldn't get the chainsaw going. But anyway, it wasn't rotten, that's what it was.
Oh my gosh. Which, which one is your sister, isn't it, name?
Lucy, she's got the stone, I have the stone down there for her. But anyhow. Yeah, the walking trail down there, some of them go down quite often, anyhow. Um, and then Darryl went down, finally got the chainsaw working, and he went down and cut the stump down, and thank you to the city. They went down after we, we cleaned it up and piled it up and they picked it up, so I appreciate that, leaving that through their vehicle. It wasn't.
Looked like it might have got rotted inside.
No, it wasn't, it's not rotten. The front part of it, which someone had broken a branch off before. They had driven a branch off before, and that's, I mean, I understand that they, it's tempting to climb because it's so close to the ground. But it's, it's, yeah, anyway, I thank the city for going down and picking up that debris up for us. And with the, 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 Barbara is the head of it, had called Joni Ernst's office, and she talked to a supervisor, do you remember, was that a article in the paper? She talked to a supervisor? She talked to a supervisor at Joni Ernst's office, or else that, that wasn't in the paper, okay, yeah, or else the supervisor called, the supervisor called Barb. And you know, tried to pacify her, and it was too bad, and all that has happened, but.
In their ear.
Yeah, it's in their ear, it's in their. Joni Ernst's off, office, and a spokesperson, I think, I called her again. We do this, yeah, she was very good.
Sure, yeah.
She was really good.
Okay, so are we, are we still on the consent agenda, or are we in a public comment time? I'm, I'm just confused where we're at, okay.
I'm, I'm glad that we approved the consent agenda.
Thanks, Norm. Your second? Laura? Alright. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Who says no? Alright. Okay, then let's go on to item twenty, resolution for money to pay the claims.
Make motion to pay the claims.
Lori, second? Darcy, whenever you're ready.
Mar?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Inglehart?
Yes.
Okay, now in the public comment time. Everybody sat here for a little while, you got anything else to say? You sure got, you got time to have it to speak.
I'll just say Dennis, extremely good job on the meeting tonight. We were anticipating being here till, what, nine thirty? Good job.
Well, thank you. Thanks, Bob, and it's good to see you, Bob. Alright, so then I think, I, so the mayor's report, I got one, just one thing to say, and it's something that I, you, you, you notice when the weather gets better, you know, and the kids are out playing. And, uh, and pretty soon school will be out, I just caution everybody just to slow down. Slow down when you're in town, and because, uh, you know, we gotta protect our little ones, and, uh, you know, it would surely hurt everybody dearly if something happens, so just, uh, slow down, and you know, gonna get there, you know, it's gonna happen anyway, so just slow down. So all I got to say, how about the council members?
They have a summer program.
Some of them left already. Some boy, or which ones are you talking about? The little one? Some of the big kids, boys left last week already.
You remember the parade is on Friday?
Yeah.
At noon, the Black Obama.
Black Obama, should I say that?
Yeah.
Do we have any, do we have any regulation on scooters? I see more scooters out.
On the highways?
No, well, sidewalk.
Are they electric?
Yeah. They're electric, but same ordinance, just on the sidewalks, so they can't be on the business sections, just like bikes and rollerblades, skateboards, you name it. But everything else on the sidewalks, I think it's just like a bike.
What can be on the sidewalk, what can? All of them could be on the sidewalk.
People can.
So, so yeah, on the ordinance that the city has for bikes, scooters, skateboards, rollerblades, they can't be on the business sidewalks, north and south, and east and west.
Okay.
But everything else on the, in town sidewalks, they can be on.
This was done by, uh, mass, you know, but they were.
If they're on the south side of the, of the four ways, then they're fine. Yep, if they're, they're staying on the south side of, on sidewalk, they're fine, but as soon as they cross four way, get in, right in front of like the hardware, then they're not supposed to be there. And we haven't since, well, they, last year they did the new concrete. This summer, I'm, I'm anticipating Dave's gonna put the emblem on each corner that says no bikes and all that.
Have you been getting, have you been getting more, or any complaints about, I don't know what age group they'd be, but dirt bikes, unlicensed dirt bikes riding in town?
In the beginning.
Riding wheelies.
In the beginning, we did, and I spoke to one of the kids' parents, and I think they put a stop to that, and there's another one that, uh, I had spoke to twice, and then I have not heard anything since.
Usually right out by Jack Hager's or it's.
Right.
And then down our street, there's.
I know who you're talking about, but I haven't.
Usually two or three of them, and they're you know, like the one seventy-five, two.
It's a green one.
Yeah, they're far enough away, I don't see the color, but I just see them zinging by.
I haven't.
Wheelies usually down the road.
Had any more calls, I haven't since the last time I dealt with it. That was.
You've just seen them lately.
It's, those, those are older kids.
Yeah.
That's been probably a couple weeks.
Last time I dealt with it was probably towards the end of March, first part of April.
Oh, no, they've, they've been out since. Oh, no, they've, they've been out since.
But like we tell everybody else, if they see it, report it. It's, I mean, they call it in.
Usually I hear it, and then they're gone by the time.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
And I talked to JT about the incident on Sunday with the little guys. Minions on.
Yeah.
The minions on their gold dirt bikes.
That's just a disaster.
That one scared me. There were just two little types on a little, little dirt bikes, riding together and up and down the street and. They were having a ball, but they're not old enough to know right from wrong or up from down, and they're gonna end up on that car.
I have a question too, I know, um, I mentioned something about, uh. The thing that Crystal mentioned about having an ordinance about empty buildings. And they said, well, when you do that, is there any way we can suggest? Curtains or drapes or something, so we don't have blankets in the windows of some of the buildings.
I did give you an opinion from the city attorney on that, it was in your packet.
I read something, I don't think it was about that.
It was on the vacant buildings.
Oh, okay. I had to read it all to that.
And so, Darcy, you just reminded me of the Lager bomber parade.
On Friday.
On Friday, so.
Might need you for traffic control.
Well, wouldn't that be something?
Cause I will be, the same time I will be at their graduation. Do that ceremony, so. I need all the.
Do I get to wear a gun?
I'll give you a truck.
Sure, I think I can do that, yeah.
It was, the gates were closed when the grinder was there. So that's, nobody was messing with their equipment.
Right, I get that, but, I mean, you can't go in after five o'clock at night anymore.
When the grinder was there. It's open now.
Yeah.
Was the grinder still there?
Wasn't the grinder there?
No.
No, okay.
But, I mean, the gates were shut, so you couldn't go in.
Yeah, this past week we had the grinding guy there.
Sign there, did we just put that up in the grinder's house? This sign says it's only open from seven to noon.
No, normally the outside gates are open, but. There was a change when we had the grinding equipment in there, so.
All right.
But anyway, you're saying, you're saying the gates were closed.
Yeah.
Yes, did you notice that grinder in there?
Well, I mean, one did.
And they might have left and then shut them behind them, you know, not leaving them open after the guys were gone.
I think she's ready now, but if they're not.
But I'm pretty sure it was the grinder.
Well, okay.
I'll try again sometime.
Yes, and if you need to deep some, there's a pile. Yes.
What are the dumpsters in there for?
Those are for cardboard, that's where people are supposed to take their cardboard, but we're having a terrible time with people not breaking it down. So then not as much fits in there.
One day it looked like it was.
Well, the big wind, the big wind out of the west and.
So then it looked like the dumpster behind this apartment.
Yeah, ma, it does, so, yes.
I got it.
Is there not a sign that they have to pack in the boxes?
Um, we should probably put a sign out, but we are gonna be adding some additional cameras out there too.
It's sad that you have to put a sign though, that, well, to pack, yeah.
Flat in boxes.
Comment on Iowa Drug Recognition Expert Advisory Board, and, uh, JT passed, or you know, was up, got like outstanding. Regional outstanding performance award for Northeast Region. I don't know how seventeen enforcement evaluations rate compared to anybody else, you know. You know, in Des Moines, they'd probably do a hundred.
There's five different regions in the state, I think.
Compliments to you.
Yes, yes, right to go. Very good.
What's this church rezoning thing, is that, the church is moving?
No, it was, they're not allowed to.
What?
They're not allowed to.
That's just that they wanted to transfer their.
Right, I mean, they can't.
Church thing from one place or another.
Right, they cannot, no.
Who's transferring from where to where?
Um, it is the building on the corner here in Waller.
The Red Rooster?
They wanna move into the Nyberg, and it's a no.
Oh, I see, and they just wanna move next door, and, and annex it, make it all work that way, I get it.
They've been told about that many times.
Yeah, so anyway, that's not gonna work, so, yeah, any, any other discussions? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm gonna go motion to adjourn.
Second? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Hey, we're out of here, thanks, everybody.